All right, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. It's Monday, December 9th, 2019. And I will call.
Tom Marlowe.
Michelle Lado.
Lloyd Johnson.
Kirby Moynihan.
Wendy Hansen.
Ryan Griffin.
Wayne Corbett.
All right, and Pastor Paul.
Let's pray. Holy One, you're beyond all understanding, and we ask your blessings tonight on each of these folks who've been called to lead this community. Help them as leaders, not just to ask the questions like, "How do we fix it?", but maybe to ask also, "What do we need to learn? What do we need to change? Who do we need to listen to?" Remind us all that we're not only leaders, but also servants of the common good. Remind us that we too are called to protect the least of these, all those who are in need, and those that are sometimes forgotten. Grant us all the wisdom and courage to speak out when it's time to speak out, and to listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen, to discover and to do what is right and good and true. In the Spirit of truth, justice, and God, give and love for our neighbors, guide us always. Amen.
Mr. George. Uh, Mr. Leagits.
I am pleased to testify, the United States of America, and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Uh, I can actually add to the agenda under Park and Rec. Item two, two B, another approval for Park and Rec member, Ashlyn O.
And then I also would like to have, under Dean there, I have number two committed from this meeting, moving to January.
All right, is there anyone else on the agenda?
I approve the agenda with the changes.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes four to zero. Consent agenda, any questions?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
I just have one question on page fourteen. Under, it's Milk Church Hubert and Solton, Solton? It is legal services for employee contract. What is that?
That's the company that you agreed to forgive, to hire to write for contract for.
We didn't agree to have the city pay for that.
I just, I just knew what I was told. I never told me that.
I'm not sure why the city would be paying for employee's contract.
I just, I believe they pay for them all. I believe the cities pay for the employee contracts. I don't know, I've never had one, so I don't know.
Why is this on here? Why do we have it on here? It's not going to be present.
I was told that Deb was asked about hiring them, and she was told to go ahead, so she hired them to write an employment contract for her.
No, she didn't have to approve.
No, it was discussed for her to have a contract drawn up by her own private attorney, but not the city to pay for it. I don't know why we would. I don't know, I've never seen. I'm not familiar with that, I should say.
I guess you'll have to wait and talk to her going when you get back, because that check's already been cut, that was cut at the end of the month, so.
So how do we, how do you want us to do that, then, since it's on here?
Well, it's already been done, so you'll want to approve it, and then discuss with her what, how you guys want to handle it, if you want her to pay it back, or what you want her to do. I, I just, it came to the City of Montrose, the bill, so. Like you said, I don't know, I've never had an employment contract before, so I don't know who. You'd have to check with other cities and see who pays for it. I honestly don't know, I've never had.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Make the motion, Kirby.
No. Tom. Yeah. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
And, and, any votes? All right, um, I am opposed to this until we can get things figured out, so motion passes four to one. Or, I'm sorry, three to one. Open forum is nothing. Truth and taxation.
So it's a public hearing, so you need to open a public hearing.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I can do that.
I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing at?
Do anything close to the resolution.
No. Seven oh six. Is there anybody here on the public hearing?
Need a second.
Oh, sorry.
All second.
Your votes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in, uh, open, public hearing. Any questions?
So I can just give you a brief update, kind of, on it. So the city's levy for this year, um, this was, it's the same as it was at the proposed levy in September. It is one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-five, which is a seventy-three thousand dollar increase over last year. It's about a six percent increase, but in all reality, the tax rate is decreasing by five and a half percent. So based on what your, um, taxable market value did this year, we'll determine if you have a tax increase or a tax decrease. Um, I did compare a couple different properties. One of them is going up about five dollars and eighty-six cents for the year, the other one's going down eight dollars and seventy-four cents for the year. So it just depends on how much your property value changed. We'll determine if you have a tax increase or not. The entire budget, this is the final entire budget for the year, so for the entire city, the budget is four million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and nine. So, anybody has any questions?
Michelle, sit. Okay. I just want to tell you guys, compared to surrounding communities, and versus the state and the county, you have done phenomenal at keeping, holding things level, so, good job. Okay. Anything else? Want to close it? All right, I'll make a motion then to close the public hearing at seven oh eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, Rick County.
I don't get the...
Oh, sorry.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash four to one.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, motion passes four to zero. Now we'll go through.
All right, so this is the first time I've been to this council meeting, so, um, apologize if I don't know precisely what it is that you would like to hear.
Uh, just any update. Are you the new officer now in the area?
Uh, yep, I'm one of the new officers or deputies for, uh, Montrose Waverly and Coquato. Um, I've been working this area for about a month and a half. So I've got a few numbers for you as far as, uh, kind of things that have transpired in, in the City of Montrose over the past month. We've had sixty-one traffic stops, um, eleven of which have resulted in citations. Uh, we've had five in custody arrests, uh, five criminal damage properties, uh, three thefts, uh, and then, uh, a whole bunch of zeros for assaults, burglaries, robberies, and disorderlies. Uh, and then I know with the snow that's come, uh, we've been really pushing on the snowbird citations for people who have been parking on the streets after hours, uh, and we've had thirteen citations written, um, regarding that since the beginning of the, uh, the snowbird season. Is there anything else that I can tell you?
No, I had it marked, and you answered it off.
Okay.
Do you know something on the mailbox stuff down in Tru- Park? Are they, is there, like, an open investigation for all that stuff, or are they just kind of dealing with that on their own?
I do not know exactly, but I can certainly find out for you. Anything specific that you would like?
Well, I know I've heard from some people who live down there that they had all the mailboxes were broken into, and we were in the mail stolen, so.
Uh, I will find out for you, sure.
Was that this morning? I think?
It happened last night.
Last, yeah.
It is apparently.
That would explain why I don't know. I haven't been able to see that yet. Anything else?
That's good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good luck.
All right, all right, to the council.
Uh, the city council meeting, the budget meeting, chamber of commerce, and streets skaters.
Anyway, there's the council meetings, and the budget meetings, and, uh, planning and zoning.
Uh, city council, some personnel, um, chamber, Park and Rec, tree lighting.
Uh, council meeting, uh, Wright County Board of Commissioners, and a wonderful two week vacation with my kids and grandkids.
Sounds fun.
Absolutely.
All right, Kevin.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Um, so entashed into your packet is the November activity report. Nothing too much really to, uh, report on for the most part, it was a fairly slow month for us, a lot of calls, but we didn't have a whole lot else going on. We generally take a week before we're too off in November, because none of us are around, so, um, any questions on that? Um, a couple of non-related items, so we did take on three new people, they're just finishing up the hiring process at this point, they should be starting with us here shortly, and be officially online on January first. We are still accepting applications as well, so anybody who's interested, just throwing a plug out there, please let us know, we're always looking for qualified candidates to join the fire department, so. Anything else?
Sounds good.
Sweet. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Matt is not here today, so, Park and Rec, we just went over, um, practice of Santa, um, doing that, wasn't a whole lot, we were planning now, uh, skate day in January. That's really about it. Along with, we are going to have, um, we need an approval for Sue Saman and Ashlyn O. to join Park and Rec in January. And with that, we had, they had discussions, um, in moving the day and time to accommodate everybody, I think they're thinking Thursdays, so, starting in January.
Make a motion to approve Sue Saman to be Park and Rec Commissioner. All second.
Okay, uh, Tom.
Aye.
I, I, and.
Aye.
Kirby.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Also, the other one, Ashlyn O.
Make motion to approve Ashlyn O. of Park and Rec Commission.
All second.
One question I have, first, um, and I'm not trying to pick fights or anything, but when I was elected, you had made mention about my mom being on planning and zoning, and me being the liaison, which I wasn't going to be. So are we going to be changing liaisons, then, if your daughter's going to be on there?
There's no recommendations, we don't do anything on.
Why? What do you mean, why? Because, like I said, she brought it up, well, my mom is the head of planning and zoning.
She's on, she's on.
She's, she is for Park and Rec.
For Park and Rec.
Oh, for Park and Rec.
Yeah, for Park and Rec, I am, I am.
That's not, no, that's not you, that's not what I, Park and Rec, I just...
It's a, I mean, it's a topic of discussion, so.
I was just, it was just something I was bringing up, just because I knew about it before, so, we've really ran into this.
Well, yeah, we did, because Ashlyn was on Park and Rec before. She was a member of Park and Rec.
No, she was just a student. She was just a student.
Student liaison, right of your, whatever.
Yeah, but, yeah, so she wasn't a voting member.
No, correct, she wasn't, so.
Well, I have a question, did she fill this out, or did you fill this out?
She did.
She did.
Yep, she filled it out, only we can... She was asked by a member of Park and Rec to come back. So, I mean, that, that's the only reason, is she was asked by a member to come back, so that they can still have liaisons, and she was the liaison before, so.
Well, you want to get young kids involved in the community, if you don't want to work with them, what's the sense of me deciding something, trying to get on something?
Right. What? I didn't understand that, what you meant by that, no, you want to...
If you want to get young people involved in the community, because right now, Park and Rec, the planning and zoning, we hardly got nobody on none of these committees. You want to get these young people involved, what's going on in the city, work with them, and let's get Montrose going a little bit more than what it is.
Yeah, well, I, and I made the motion to approve her. But I'm not saying not to, I just was asking a question about, you know, if there was a conflict with me being, doing planning and zoning, potentially my mom being on there, if there was a conflict with Michelle, and then having her daughter on there. That was the only question I had.
Well, if anybody's got any complaint, tell them, come to your face and say it to your face.
Okay, we'll move on. Um, okay, there was a motion, sorry, and was there a second?
Aye, sir.
Okay, so then, a vote. Kirby.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Aye.
I'll stay in on Tom.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three, one. Planning and zoning, are you going to do any of that, Wendy, or?
Um, actually, Ryan.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Um, so at the, uh, November Planning Commission meeting, we had a, uh, a public hearing to discuss interim use permit for, uh, a solar farm out by the city's water treatment plant. The, uh, Planning Commission voted four to zero recommending approval of the interim use permit, um, and I put together a resolution which starts on page forty in your packet. Um, and then on page forty-one, I have a list of, uh, recommended, um, conditions of approval as part of the interim use permit, and that, um, we can, we go through those one by one, or, um, or, I assume everyone's already read their packet. So I, I can, I can answer questions on those, or, um, I mean, I, I, I know you've all read the packet, and you've all read my memo, so I don't, I don't, I try not to be as redundant as possible, but, um, the, the only concern I really had between the Planning Commission meeting and here is I, I noticed, um, kind of the southeast part of the property clips the, uh, the shoreline overlay district, so I put a condition of approval in there that, um, that renewable properties has to verify that they won't be, um, into that shoreline area. It's, I, the shoreline overlay district is not marked on that map that, um, that they had put together previously, um, and it's, it's hard to measure exactly on a computer with, um, with just aerial photos, but it, it looks like it goes into that area, just on that southeast corner, just a little bit. So that, that was kind of the only, the only thing that, that came up between Planning Commission meeting and here, that they just have to stay out of that little, that little corner, however much area that ends up being. Other than that, um, I can answer any other questions that, uh, that you might have. So we'd be looking for a, uh, a motion to, um, approve the interim use permit and the resolution, or, uh, or tabling if we have more questions, or, um, or whatever the council wishes to do.
That's you.
Well, I thought we, I thought we were going to table.
Do we, do we want to table this till, I, I would like to have a discussion, at least, if, if we're going to table.
Yeah, I know, discussions, but I just, uh, wanted a couple of things clarified, that, you know, with two different area maps, and where the exact nails are going to be, I think they should furnish us with that, you know?
Okay.
So we don't have to worry about.
The, the Planning Commission is recommending that we go with, um, with option one on that map, which is the, um, the area that's kind of between the compost facility and the wastewater treatment, so it would be mostly screened, um, just because of the natural, uh, topography there. It's downhill from, from the highway, and from the homes that are on, across Highway twenty-five there. Um, I, I think the, the concern is how far up the hill do you come, and are you going to see it from, from those homes anyway? And I think that was what the concern that was brought up, um, uh, before the meeting. So, they, they are looking to do five acres, I think. They mentioned that if it's, at any less than that, it's not a feasible project, so, um, I mean, we can...
Can we, uh, request them to draw an exact map of where they're going to put the solar panels?
Yeah, uh, we can, we can ask to see that. One of the things that they'll do when they're getting ready to submit their, their finalized plans is they'll put together a, a specific site plan that shows where all the roads are, and how they're going in, and everything like that. And we can, we can request that we want that upfront, if we, if we want to, um, and obviously, they're, they're not going to do any more than, than we ask them to do upfront, because it costs money, but if we, if we want to see that, then...
What's the other map that you have? I only have one map.
Yeah, there is one map.
It's right here.
We have one for planning and zoning, which is different than what's in the graphics. And this is just an interim use permit, it's not a final, uh, decision on, you know, we're going to move forward.
So, this would be, um, close to the final.
But before the final's approved, we, you know, we can ask for the map, because you know, draws the things that they ask for. Right?
Yeah, we can, we can say that we're not going to approve this until we have more information, if, if we're not comfortable approving it as we see it right now.
Okay.
I was saying, with the, well, that gets per, every couple of months.
You're just saying, you kind of want to, uh, general where they're going to put them for a, in case we need, uh, maybe to fix their... Yeah.
And the other issue, too, is we'll want to put an expiration date on the interim use permit as well. Probably twenty-five to thirty years is, uh, is typical for a project like this. Um, I mean, that's, the interim use permit means it's not permanent, so it's got to have a, a termination date, and then they can either, at that time, they can either come back to renew their IUP, or, or, um, dismantle the project, whichever.
I think the other one is twenty-five years with the option of, you know, that's what we should have, that should save.
I think it's twenty-six or twenty-seven.
Well, they changed it because they claimed we couldn't, uh, put it together in that one year, so we had it on here.
Will there be, um, will there be some kind of a, like, an escrow or something, giving hell for decommissioning?
Yeah, I, I think I put that in the, in the conditions of approval, that they, that they're responsible for...
Besides that, about decommissioning, you're giving a decommission plan, but I don't think we had a dollar in our treasury in here, so.
Yeah, that's another thing, though.
I think the other one, I think the big one we have, I think there's like a hundred and twenty-five thousand or something sitting there, escrow, or, so we'll have to figure out a little cost to, and make them put it in, like, an escrow somewhere, I think. That's what we do.
Okay.
Yeah, shouldn't we get to see how much they're going to pay for it, for that?
Well, we, we took it off the agenda, so we're...
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
So it'll go next, January, back to planning and zoning?
Um, if you want to send it back to planning and zoning, you can, or, um, or it'll just come straight back here, whichever, whichever you want to do.
Let's see, the planning and zoning, will that meeting be before the council meeting?
No, no, we're stuck in line today now. We would be first, but you could probably find a way to...
Should we send it back to the planning and zoning?
Yeah.
If all you're looking for is a map, right, we, if all you're looking for is a defined map, we should be able to get that before the next council meeting.
Right, and, and the one they're paying per, per, per acre.
Yeah, well, here, okay.
So, yeah, we'll just move a little bit to the council meeting.
Next time, yeah. Yeah, but it'll be... Right, because they're not going to bill it in the, anyway.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, there is a old business resolution, uh, new business resolution to increase the water access charge. Wendy.
Okay, so this is, um, so page fifty-two and fifty-three, the two resolutions for increasing the access charge, one is the water access charge, one is the sewer access charge. These are what we charge on building permits for new homes when they're built. Um, the plan that was, our, um, plan that was done, uh, probably ten, twelve years ago, for our water and sewer funding, showed a, a hundred dollar increase every year to keep us in line for any time we have to do replacements and access stuff, so, this is kind of just a routine thing that we've been reviewing last ten years for water.
So what does this bring now, rate up to, it was like sixty-five hundred or something?
Um, well, the water, water's going to twenty-six, and the sewer's going to fifty-four. So, about eight thousand.
Twenty-six.
Yeah. All right, then we need a motion for approval.
Make motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven.
All second.
All right, I, and Tom.
Aye.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen thirty-eight, uh, increasing the sewer access charge.
Second.
I'm second.
All right, uh, Lloyd.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
I, Kirby.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, um, then, on there we have the sewer and water rates. So, there's a memo, um, in the packets, I can just read it. It said, "The city's capital improvement plan was adopted includes two major construction projects, one being the new well and wellhouse that's, you know, in the process of being built, the other will be the total reconstruction of the city's original town site, which is scheduled for twenty twenty-one." Um, both of these projects, of course, require funding from the water and sewer funds. The, so, the city's current water and sewer rates will not support the required funding for these projects. In order to be proactive, be prepared for the projects, the staff is suggesting that council approve twenty cent increase in both the water and sewer rates beginning January first of twenty twenty. Increase on an average utility bill of seven thousand gallons per month would be approximately two dollars and eighty cents a month for both water and sewer. So there's two resolutions before you, one for the water rate increase, and one for the sewer rate increase.
Make motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine.
All second.
All right, I, and Kirby.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Make motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash forty.
All second.
Uh, Lloyd.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
I, Kirby.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. All right. Upcoming meetings, next special, next council meeting is December twenty-third, special council meeting, uh, Park and Rec. They have it right now, Monday, January sixth, five thirty. Planning and zoning is Wednesday, January eighth. Planning and zoning also has a public hearing that night, um, seven o'clock. Then the next council meeting is January thirteenth, and city council workshop is January twenty-seventh.
Is there, what's on the agenda for the twenty-third, there is that meeting necessarily, or it could be, it's pretty close to that one.
I don't know what she's got on the agenda. She listed as a special council meeting, just in case there was anything that needs to be taken care of, you know, into the year.
Four in, two.
But I don't know what she's got in mind right now, do you?
I'm not sure yet, either.
I thought maybe you could just write that one, so I, so close.
If we don't have anything, if we don't have anything on the agenda, we certainly can.
Yeah, and when we set those meetings up, we said that if we didn't have anything on the agenda, we'd just go ahead and cancel.
I thought she mentioned, maybe, I don't know, should we wait for her?
Yeah, yeah, because it, it only... Yeah, yeah, because it, it only has to be canceled, I mean, canceled, you know, next week or whenever, there's nothing, it's not gonna fill the agenda.
All right. Acknowledgements then, I'm gonna go with Sue, I think her name is, last name is Saman, and Morgan Otto, and Roy Henry, for, um, stepping up and helping us with the ornament decorating, because I was not able to attend, and Matt had to leave early, so they stepped in and helped with the ornaments at practice of Santa. Um, Tony Naderbeek and Tom Wyman, for, uh, coming out and helping us with the tree lighting and lighting up everything for us, and their sense of humor is always fun. Tom is, um, as well as Matt for organizing all of it. And then, since we're coming kind of to the end of the year, Alliance, Methodist Church, um, the organization that does the community dinner, Montrose Days Committee, just everybody for helping us out throughout the year.
Uh, I'll give a shout out to the public works guys for clearing all the snow and everything. Along with that, there was a question brought up to the city about the snow plowing rules, and it's, if there's two inches or more snow, then the city goes out and plows, just so everybody knows that, so it's out there, so it was brought to me by a couple people, so, but.
They're putting that in the newsletter as well, so, um, yeah. We actually had a gentleman come in today and say how great, um, it was actually Dan Reimer, how good he was doing all the clogs and stuff today, so that's, that's awesome too.
Yeah, sometimes, you know, it may not be the most, just the blowing, makes the intersections slippery.
Yeah, I, I would like to, uh, acknowledge the hardworking and dedicated members of our city staff, uh, they continue to serve the community as well as the demands of the city council, despite some continued efforts by, uh, some members of the council to cause a little disruption and manipulate the outcome of staff reorganization plans through a little bit of fear and intimidation. I frankly am appalled by this behavior, and I extend my apologies to all the staff members on behalf of the entire city council.
Anybody else?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.